Okay.
Good evening, welcome to the Shakopee Public School District Board Meeting for November 10, 2014. I have a world call.
Berg.
Here.
Powerman.
Yes ma'am.
Hallis.
Here.
McGeehan.
Here.
Swanson.
Good evening.
Tucker.
Here.
And Romanek. Here. I'd like to recognize any visitors to the C-Team's Board Meeting. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead to I am free, which is consideration of the agenda as presented, and there are no additions, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion will carry. Item four, consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent?
Approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion will carry. We'll move a little bit on the agenda this evening and go right to new business action items. Eight point one, which is the 2014 audit. Bert, what?
Yes, thank you. We are, we have Matt from PDV here today. We'll go through a PowerPoint about the audit. It turned out all right. This group really worked hard with our two accounting people. And we were a little behind to start, but finished up. Almost in rapid time, I'm thinking, but that'll be up to Matt to say. But it was, again, a very professionally done audit, and I appreciate Matt's staff and my staff as well.
Thanks, Mike. Members of the board, thank you for the invitation to present tonight. You received four documents, which are the official final product of the audit. I'm not going to page through that one. You received a copy of the PowerPoint as well, and for members of the audience, there's a copy over there as well. Want to take about 10 minutes or so just to give you the results of our audit and as well as some financial analysis for the most recent fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. This year, as in years past, we provided an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and that's our real goal as auditors. It's Mike and his team's responsibility to prepare financial statements at the district. It's our job to come in, test, examine, give an opinion on those financial statements, so that users of them can be assured of their accuracy. We do that through the independent auditor's report in front of the statements, and the unmodified opinion is the best we can give. So the numbers we're going to be looking at tonight are materially accurate, a true picture of the district's financial position at the end of the last school. We also performed a couple of compliance audits. The feds require us to take a look at where your federal dollars are being spent to make sure that they're in compliance with those grants. This year, we tested the child nutrition program and the special education program, and happy to report no findings on either of those two programs for the year. So a clean opinion on sync of audit. And then finally, we did a Minnesota legal compliance audit. The state requires that we test you on all the various state statutes that apply to school districts, and at one minor housekeeping item, a particular report that needs to get to the state was a couple of days late, but other than that, a clean opinion when it comes to Minnesota legal compliance as well. As far as internal control goes, we had three findings this year. Two you see each year, what I call perennial findings, lack of segregation of accounting duties and preparation of financial statements. In this year, we did have to make an adjustment to the numbers related to state aid, as well as some debt escrow activity to get the numbers in line ultimately give our opinion. We spent about an hour with the finance team, finance committee, last week, going through all these numbers in detail, all the findings in detail. If you have specific questions on them, I'll be happy to respond to those at the end of the presentation. And I think we gave the details of those to the committee, and I think they were comfortable with where we landed. With my remaining time, I want to take a look at the numbers for the year, and the best way to do that is to start with the general fund budget. As a board, you set the parameters for spending, the operations for the finances here at the district through that budget process, hand it off to administration, they execute that budget on your behalf. So any analysis of how the year went should be done under the context of that budget. And if you recall for 2014, you approved a budget that had $73.2 million in revenue, $72 million of spending, and a small surplus of about $1 million at the end of the year. Actual results for the year, revenue came in a little bit less than anticipated, $72 million, which is about $1 million, under budget, about a one and a half percent variance. Most of that in state aids, general education aids, the projections regarding enrollment came a little bit shy of your original projections. The general fund expenditures for the year were $74.1 million, about $2.1 million over budget, or about a 2.8 percent variance. Regular instruction costs for personnel coming on board during the year, as well as some facility costs would be winter, last year, the utilities associated with that, grow some variances for you during the year there as well. Fund balance ultimately did decline about $2 million to about $10.4 million at the end of the year. One thing I do want to mention regarding the budget, it was the original budget that you set and did not amend during the year. So there are going to be swings throughout the year when it comes to that, and that's something to consider as a board, depending on how significantly your operations change during the year, some of the projections or some of the needs that the district have. You may want to revisit that, amend the budget so everybody's on the same page. But based on an original budget, when you see variances in that one or two percent range, considering that budget was done 18 months ago before the projections for the student count, we're relatively on track for the year. The numbers are ultimately driven by your student count. About 90 percent of your revenue came from the state of Minnesota this past year, and you had about a 311 increase in your resident ADMs. These are public school students that live within the Shakopee boundaries, whether they attend here or not. It's about a 4 percent increase. And then the number of students that you actually serve only increased about 3 percent because the open enrollment losses continued to grow during the year. You're basically bringing in about the same number of non-residents, right around that 150 mark or so, but your residents that leave the district for other districts grows a little bit each year. And as a result, while a 4 percent increase on your residents, only about a 3 percent increase on your students served. As I mentioned, revenue for the year, about 90 percent of it came from the state of Minnesota, about 8 percent was from local property taxpayers, and 4 percent from other sources, mostly federal dollars. It's about a 5 percent increase from 2013 to 2014, $68.6 million to $72 million in 2014.
On back on a slide, one minute. We did have the state pay back the property tax shift, so our property tax looks lower than it was. It's just kind of, we advanced them the money back in 2011, it looks like, with the 9.9, and then they paid it back in 2014. So that's a big swing, but next year with general fund, our local property tax will be up in that $8 million range again.
I'm trying to find the exact amount. $3.6 million was paid back. So if you add 3.6 to the property tax, it'll be right around $9 million or so, which would be an incremental increase from the prior year, and deduct 3.6 from the 2011. So basically swap those two around. So 2011, 2014 are going to be anomalies. Typical ratio are going to be the 2010, 2012, 2013 years, as long as the state doesn't go back to the tax shift anytime soon.
Matt, if you have a question, you can ask.
No, jump in right away.
I just want to clarify, the gray, I guess, is, which is other, I'm assuming a lot of that's federal dollars. I'm assuming, for example, in 2010, the $6 million is largely driven by stimulus dollars probably at that point.
Yes.
But it's declined to 4, 4, 3, 3. What I'm, my question is, are we going to see a continuing decline, or are we going to kind of be steady-stable in the threes without some sort of stimulus activity? Maybe it's a question for Mike.
Well, the stimulus was just in 11 there, and then our biggest ones are Title and Federal Special Ed. And so, back in the Special Ed table back here, I'm not sure whether that's going to keep going. It's not, it doesn't appear to be going up, so it depends staying revenue side.
The federal revenue has been pretty, we went through the sequestration, so we lost 10 percent, actually more than, quite a lot, $150,000 in bonds each last year, and now that's no longer, so federal dollars should go back up, just slightly, a little bit.
So we've probably been more in the $4 million range, probably, than how that did.
In or the state estate.
And of that other number, about $2 million is federal, the other 1.3 is other local services, everything from fees for classes to admissions to the ballgame. It's federal, I mean, two thirds of it, yeah. We're often asked, how does our district compare to other districts? And it's not a uniform look as you go from district to district. So I'm always a little wary of these comparisons, but I think it also gives you some perspective on some of the disparities of funding from one district to another across the state. And what I've done here is show revenue per student served for your district on top, broken up by the major categories, and then the seventh county metro area, and then all districts statewide. And we only have compared this for 2013, so maybe look there, and you're going to see about a $1, about a $1,700 variance between a typical district who gets about $10,700 and your district, which was about $9,000 in revenue for 2013. There are three or four factors that play a big part of that. The operating referendum that your local property taxpayers pay is ultimately going to be a piece of that. You can see it's about a $500 difference between the average district and your district. And then also, state revenue plays a role in that as well, there's about a $700 disparity there. And there are varying levels of state aid depending on need at your district. If you're a high three and reduced count or high poverty district, you're going to receive an additional aid through the general education fund, it's called compensatory aid, that's going to add dollars to the state numbers. Also, if you're a high special education need district, you're going to see more special education aid coming in as well. So again, demographically, the choices that you and your taxpayers make regarding the operating referendum are ultimately going to drive the revenue side of it. And that ultimately is going to drive the spending as well. And if you take a look at that, generally, you're going to spend what you bring in over time, and a typical district is spending about $10,700. Your district spent about $9,200 in 2013, again, about $1,500 disparity, mostly driven, not necessarily by choice, but because of the revenue stream that ultimately comes into the district. To look at where the dollars are going, about 70 percent of it is hitting the classroom directly. If you look at regular instruction, the biggest piece of the pie, vocational, at the bottom portion of the chart, and special education, which are the instructional categories, 69 percent for 2014. Go back a year, that chart's almost identical, actually, 70 percent hit the classroom in 2013. And instructional support, which is a big part of the education process, it's a 77 percent number for 2013, well over three quarters of the dollars hitting the direct instructional activities here at the district. This chart does the best job of showing the five-year history. As we looked earlier, there was a deficit for the year in 2014 of about $2 million. Took the fund balance down from $12 million down to about $10.4 million. And then the bottom portion of this chart shows you the breakout of the fund balance from there. We have a set aside for operating capital, which are dollars that came from the state through the general education formula that are required to be spent on facilities and equipment, about $1.9 million. So those are tied up for that particular activity. And then there's another set aside called health and safety. That's a negative amount, and that represents future levy authority that the district has to reimburse yourself for health and safety expenditures that have occurred in the past. Basically, spend that down, code the expenditures against that particular category, and then when you get the levy authority and choose to levy for in the future, we quote it back to that and make you whole ultimately there. What's left is the unassigned fund balance, and that's kind of the scorecard or the discretionary balance that you have here to work with. $9.2 million dollars at the end of the year, you can see how that compares to the last several years. And probably a better way to look at that is as a percentage of spending. And the state has calculated it out for you, it's a 14.7 percent. And if you look at your fund balance policy, your fund balance policy is looking for about a 12 percent level. So after everything is said and done, that unassigned amount is pretty much right in line with the fund balance policy that you as a board have established. And again, fund balance represents the financial health of the district, and that is no necessarily right or wrong answer when it comes to that. It's a policy decision as to what level of fund balance you would like to maintain, your policy's at 12 percent. Hey Matt, can you go back one slide to the health and safety line? How far back are we allowed to levy to essentially pay ourselves back? Is there any limit?
Any question?
I don't think there is a limit. I just, I'll be checking with the state on this to see when we're going to be made whole. Sometimes when we have projects, it's kind of a timing thing on projects, you know, some projects happen, now we pay for them early and then get the money next year. Sometimes we get the money advanced and then have the project come due, so it's a bunch of timing stuff right here, I believe, and I'll be following up with the state to verify that that, that we'll get that down to zero at some point.
Down to zero, meaning not necessarily going all the way back to 2010?
No, down to zero, not necessarily, $700,000 in whole.
So years past, 2013 and prior?
Collectors, yeah.
We can't collect.
We should be able to collect, because what they do is they look at the revenue over the last period of time in the levy, and that goes back for all your life, it looks like, but since '98, I think the number says on there. So they look at your revenues and how much you levy, they look at your expenditures, and then the difference is what you can levy.
And then if we zero that out, let's assume we can go back a couple of years, and we levy it and we zero it out, those funds then get deposited into the general unrestricted?
Yeah, basically, it would be, would the, or is it capital, where do you?
It would ultimately grow your fund balance. Let's say if you had the levy here in 2014, your fund balance would be at $11.1 million, and you would zero out that negative, so your other two numbers would seem the same. But obviously, cash flow is, you know, financial health wise, you'd be at much better on the growth.
I mentioned fund balance is a discretionary decision, a policy decision, but a couple of things to keep in mind. It's there for two things. It's there for cash flow, and it's there to act as a shock absorber, especially when you're in kind of a high-growth mode like your district is. A lot of decisions need to be made, a lot of variables come in each year depending on your student count. And this chart, I think, does a nice job of showing the cash flow part of the equation. The tan portion, the green portion of the bar, is your fund balance each of the last five years, relatively stable and flat over that time. But take a look at the dark blue portion of the bar there, that's the cash balance, and that is dictated by the state as to when they decide they're going to pay you. They had some financial challenges, obviously, in the last couple of years. The first place that they generally go, which they see as relatively painless, is to hold back dollars from school districts because they're on a cash basis of the state. If they can balance their inflows and their outflows, they consider their balance, their budget balance. So the worst of it was in 2012. That's when they had already borrowed from you that $3.6 million in tax shift. They also were only paying the state aids out at about 64 percent during the school year, they have a 36 percent came in cash after the end of the year. And you can see there's a $10 million disparity between your fund balance and your cash balance in 2012, basically representing a $10 million I O U from the state of Minnesota because they were having some financial challenges. Now, things have gotten much better. The tax shift has been paid back. The payout from, of the state aids is at 90.10 again, 90 percent during the school year, 10 percent after year end. And you can see at the end of 2014, your cash balance is actually higher than your fund balance, by about $5 million or so. And that represents the first property tax payment that comes in May or June from property tax pay, and that's going to be used for the following school year. So you're getting some of your cash ahead of time now. This state hasn't borrowed against that. So again, when you're making decisions regarding fund balance, consider cash flow. It is as good as it's going to get right now, no property tax shift and a 90.10 payout, but there are going to be times down the line, again, what I would anticipate, the state will come back and ask for your help when it comes to cash flow. And you're going to want to factor that in when it comes to your fund balance policy. Quick look at the food service fund, it had a very solid year, $96,000 surplus, grew your fund balance from $227,000 at the beginning of the year to $223,000 at year end. That actually is unusual. Seeing districts across the state struggling in their food service fund this year. A lot of the federal mandates are causing some challenges, both on the expense side and also on the meal serve side. A lot of students are not choosing to pay for lunches under the new program. So I'm seeing deficits most of the places, and here actually, you had a very solid positive year in food service for 2014. And then community service is the final fund we'll look at tonight, and this is basically a conglomeration of a lot of activities. Your school readiness program, your ECFE program, all your community education programs are in this particular fund. And what I would do is look at the bottom portion of the graph, and that's the fund balance for each of the categories that you have. You can see all of them are positive at the end of the year, and that indicates to me that the revenue stream, the levy, the aids, the charted for services, the tuition fees that you have for this fund are covering the cost of doing business in this fund, and each of them, each of those programs are self-supporting when it comes to the end of the year. So I think a good story to tell if you're going to be serious. That's what I have. I wanted to give you a very high-low overview of the results of the year, the results of our audit. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to stay and answer them.
Is it better to estimate your student count, everything low, and have a surprise gift at the end of the year? Or is it better to try to be accurate? What's, what works there?
I would, I guess, answer your question with a question. And I think what I would want to know is if I knew that my numbers were better, would I change my program in any way? If you have the needs fulfilled at the district from you as policy chair of the board, if you feel that the students' needs are being covered, and it's within that budget, then you're probably on track. If you feel that you want to revisit that mid-year and see if there is a larger revenue stream coming in, you could certainly do that and see if there's any places that might be additional. I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer. Obviously, you want to be as accurate as possible, and again, as I mentioned earlier, it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be anything wrong with having an amendment during the year, getting a report from administration on where your student count appears to lie, what that might do to the projections that you have. And then you as a board with that information can choose to do something with it or not when it comes to the budget.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the audit.
Make a motion to the deputy office.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much now.
Thank you.
And your staff. We're going to skip a little bit more and go to six point one, which is the second meeting for food service, the food for the clubs, next please, on federal business.
So at the last meeting, we had, as Chairman Ryan said, we had the first reading of the various clubs that we've gone to yet, and there didn't seem to be much concern. There was some questions on two of them, and we put those in your packet again, so that you can see some changes that were made. One, the first one being the symbolic club, a lot of those, the formatting change, we changed a different formatting with six questions, and they had a couple of questions that they hadn't answered. We've answered all those now with that format change. And the other club that we had a little question on was the bowling club. They had a little language that was a little harsh at times, so we came back to talk to them and softened up some of their shells and this and that to kind of fit more of our philosophy of the school district, participation and all that, and they were happy to do that. That was just, they weren't as polished in their writing for what they were trying to accomplish, so they were more than happy to do that. So we're going to bring both those forward, and the other ones, and I'd like this to be more to give a final lesson on those clubs at this time.
Are there any questions?
Any other questions you might have as well?
I guess, does one, do the group, do they follow our policies regarding clubs? Do they get to reasonable request, and if it works well for them, do they meet those parameters?
Definitely. And you know, actually, because I'm some guidance, I'll probably make some kind of things that they might not normally take. If anybody comes in with a bit of intention of wanting to help, I don't think that could happen. That's why we sometimes make them aware of, again, if this one, they're going to have the decision-making process, and who's the final arbitrator, and something is wrong, they can do the stat, and something's, so just if people think of things or something does come up, who got the, you know, the main things in place. So most people are real happy to go through that process. It's, yes.
Any other questions? Want to make any comment?
No.
Well said.
Am I supposed to?
I'll make a motion to approve the second class in two chairs.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Did you have any questions?
Well, thank you very much. I've been working for so many years for this staff, and it's very exciting.
Which, does that qualify for you all?
What? Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll go back to five point one, under old business discussion items, teaching and learning, nothing, and then people.
Good evening. I almost said "after" you. I just wanted to do sort of a little bit of a preview of what we'll be showing you in December, which is the workaround secondary, and then just also talk briefly tonight about first grade. So if you, as you know, we've been working diligently with about 10 committees around articulation regarding the secondary program. And this is all sort of early results because we have one more round of meetings that'll happen in November, but it's already shaping up that we're going to see a lot of changes in our elective areas, beginning next year in 2014, 15, with the new required gateway courses, one from each of the six areas of interest, which we've talked about before. And then there was some discussion when I met with you last time about whether the electives, which especially in seventh grade, we really didn't have elective choice before, whether we would sort of revamp the electives in seventh grade in a two-year process or in a one-year process, but as they all met here recently, they're just ready to go for it. So it's all going to be revamped going into next year. And I'm going to give you a little preview of what seventh and eighth is shaping up to look like here in a minute. Another thing that's been a lot of focus of our discussions in those groups, working on the six areas of interest, is how to widen the choice for ninth grade electives as well. With those, with ninth grade being physically in the two junior highs, there's been, it's been difficult to give them kind of the same variety of choice that is available to the 10th and 12th graders. So I've sort of challenged our tick committees to think outside the box about how to do that, even though we're living with those limitations of the brick and mortar right now. So there's going to be ongoing discussions about how to do that. Some things that we've definitely committed to, that you'll see in proposals, is offering full-year world language options in seventh grade, which we were unable to do before. A new scope and sequence of courses around computer science, around biomedical, and some new courses, especially in science and technology. So these are all working titles, and I want to emphasize that, because they were definitely into, let's have fun with the titles, but they are fun. Remember, on the, you'll see here on the left-hand side is our areas of interest, arts and communication, engineering and manufacturing, health sciences, human services, business and entrepreneurship, and then science and technology. Here are some working titles of the choices that kids will be able to pick from beginning next year. And so when you look at those, like Drop the Beat is an electronic music composition choice, A House of Style has to do with interior and fashion design, Shape Your Space and Design Your World has to do with art. They definitely are going to change this title, but it's the placeholder. Convergence Journalism is definitely not exciting enough, but actually, what it is, what it is, is actually, I love what they're thinking about doing. It's really, I mean, and Crystal would be able to verify this, really now, if you want to be in publishing or reporting, et cetera, you have to know all phases of the operation. It used to be you could just be behind the camera or just do the report, that kind of thing. It's not true anymore. That's not how it's done in the real world. So it's really, that's where the word convergence journalism comes from, it's knowing all the aspects of it. But I guarantee you, they'll have a better title by the time you see it in December. And then obviously, design and build, architecture, all those, health sciences is an area that we really, I was excited to see some of those, medical detectives, first responder, teen chef, law and order, kids should take that just for the name itself. And then innovation lab, money doesn't grow on trees, and then you can see in the science of technology, and we really had no strict, like, computer kind of courses at the middle level. So now we're looking at app creations, computer applications, and an invisible world of technology, which is really about nano technology. So that's kind of a highlight, real, and again, the working titles, because they're subject to change, but that's sort of what they're thinking, and this is what both seventh and eighth graders will get to choose from. And one thing I'm excited about, based on principal recommendation, these electives will be open both in seventh and eighth, so we will have classes that'll have some. So we will have classes that'll have seventh and eighth graders together, which is another nice transition piece, because that is what happens at the high school. So it again gets them used to more of a multi-age grouping, which is really, I think, good for high school level.
Did anyone come up with a coding class as a suggestion?
Part of app creations would be kind of like preliminary coding would be part of that. They were afraid to say it quite that clearly because they thought it might scare some of the kids away. But definitely, when you look at what I think they'll start to put into place for ninth grade and above, it'll have all of those components. It'll be more of a straight academic computer science piece.
So a child starting seventh grade next year, between seventh and eighth grade, how many of these are they able to pick?
So the, one of the things the principals wanted to see is that these courses would be semester offerings instead of quarter, because the required gateway courses are quarter classes. And they wanted the kids to go a little bit deeper into their areas of interest. Plus, I think, just a concern to make sure that kids and teachers have more time together to kind of build that relationship. So I call them, if you are the non-band, non-choir, non-world language kid, in seventh grade, you'd be able to choose three of these, and in eighth grade, you'd be able to choose five. But if you are heavily scheduled band, choir, and language, then you'll have just a very, you know, a smaller bank. Because you're choosing the languages in the band choir as your electives.
Is it a minimum of two, though, each year, even if you're in those other?
If they take full year world language, it takes out a whole period. So like in seventh grade, if I'm a band choir, and then I want to take full year world language, that takes out a whole, yeah. There is no choice. Well, they're choosing band choir language.
Are they talking about both band choir or band choir?
Band or, they can take both. So it kind of depends on what they decide. But those, that is their three choices when they do that. So that means then it's hard for them to enter that.
So my own clarity, they have three elective options each.
In seventh grade, no, no, just three, because they're semester courses. In seventh grade, they have three. And if, in eighth grade, they'd have five.
So in seventh grade, they would have two, one semester and one semester.
All right. Any questions about those range of courses? It kind of gives you an insight to what will be shaping up at the high school as well, because these are all supposed to be intro opportunities that would be at the high school level. First grade, I just want to talk about first grade because we made such a wonderful investment in all-day K yesterday, and I want you to know I haven't forgotten and that we've started to meet with first grade and really talk about what does it mean now that this first class of all-day K students are going to be coming to us next fall? So some of the things that we are looking at already and kind of committing to for our work this year is really raising end-of-year expectations, which we did as well in kindergarten. And anecdotally, just to kind of share, I saw a couple of our kindergarten teachers a few weeks ago. We had sent them to a workshop, that K team, to kind of take a look at what the state is saying about all-day K. And they were telling me at this point, they're about a month ahead where they would normally be and feeling really good about how quickly they're getting to know their kids, a, because that makes a big difference when you can be with them all day. And really identifying kids who may need help and those kids who are moving along quickly. So they're even having some conversations about the fact that maybe even kindergarten needs to start thinking about some flex grouping, because they've got math kids who are really ready to go and be in the first grade standard. So those kinds of conversations are happening, and we're excited about that. So, you know, first grade meeting to make sure that we're keeping our expectations high. Adding STEM labs, which we did in kindergarten, world technology integration. They'd like to continue what kindergarten has started. Stronger focus on science instruction. When the commissioner was here to see Ann Rutter at Jackson, she talked about how science can actually also help with literacy. One of the things first grade said, they absolutely will not need to spend a lot of review, which they've had to in the past. And still continuing our commitment to nonfiction writing and reading. And then they love the kindergarten grading rubric, which Dave created with our K team. Want to do something similar. So that's kind of their wish list for working on this year. So we, you know, those are all things that would match well with some of the work that we did last year. And I think, next steps, I just want to make sure so you know, in December electronically, we'll be giving you the five-year plans from the articulation teams, also the course proposals and registration guides for you to review and for us to discuss them at the January meeting. So, questions?
Love it.
It's fun. Thanks.
Go to five point two, which is the joint city of Shakopee School District Committee's update. I'm sorry, Matt. I was reading the next one.
Well, basically, last, we met with the city, two representatives from the city council. And it was great. We also invited all of the, well, not all of, but many potential partners. River Valley Theater, Scott County, the cultural liaison, the YMCA, the senior club.
Peter?
I said River Valley Theater. Potential partners, both in programming and financial fitness vision that Brad has for the city. And essentially, at the end of the meeting, we voted, and three of the four of us on the committee voted to move forward with a feasibility study to see what can be accomplished.
And that will be a little what our, what our time would be. We're waiting to see scoping out decisions that need to be made in terms of the size of the field, helps our sports, know more, pool, or so it's basically just having some professional planning on what we want to pull forward.
What's the timing of these little stuffs?
They will be completing it by, by January, February. So they're trying to gather a lot of information in short amount of time. So, and they will be doing a scientific community as well, after ours, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, January, February again, so that didn't conflict with the school districts.
And overall, I guess I consider the city is very interested. All the other groups are very interested in making sure whatever's done there helps our referendum pass. That was a strong sense from the room, was that our referendum is the biggest priority right now. And anything that they need to help, we can explore it in the next, we can explore not doing that or doing that in a phase two, basically, somewhere down the road. I was glad to hear that. At least our highest priorities this year.
Anything else? Ready questions?
Maybe just to restate that this is just a feasibility study at this point. There are commitments made. It's, and frankly, from a school board, it's, the city is doing the feasibility study, and they're asking us and a bunch of others, would you be interested in partnering? And what we've learned and what you'll see in a bid from the community survey and from, I believe, our scientific study is a lot of the things that Brad and the city is bringing forward as needs. We're hearing it for the same thing for our district. So there seems to be some natural partnerships that we can do. And one of the things that I think our board currently does and is willing to continue to do is be an excellent partner with leasing from the city. And so part of our conversation had, was, and will be, as we grow as a community and the city or other, quite frankly, other entities, build things that our students could benefit from, we would look at trying to be great partners with them, whether it's leasing or perhaps partnering to own space. So those are things that I, from my standpoint, I'm excited about, is what can we do together to make our community better?
Anything else? Not for the five point three, which is the guiding coalition update. Giving the state's survey results. Angela, Scott, and Crystal.
I'll just say that this was supposed to be the last meeting, but I'm going to have one more. So the guiding coalition was to give us their statements of consultation. I felt as though there was a lot of really good dialogue that was happening. There was a little bit of debate, which I appreciated, because I hadn't really heard too much debate. So that was nice. There was some shock and awe moments, I think, when they got the voter polls and the hotspots. And to see how many people really don't vote was shocking to me, so that was a good light. But I think I'm interested to see what the final statements are going to say, but it really felt like there was a good.
Maybe backing on Angela, the statements that were reviewed at the beginning of the meeting included all the documented statements from previous guiding coalition meetings. And they had a nice write-up where everybody got to kind of see what they had said and actually, Brad, for the format, as well as make some comments to them just to make sure that that is in this team around the right path. The primary focus of these, this group's statements of consultation this time around had everything to do with looking at it from the student, parent, and the public lens, which can be a completely different perspective. So they broke out into table groups, spent a good deal of time coming up with their statements and then bringing it full circle, putting it on the magic clingy board, whatever Dennis calls it. Magic board, magic map. And I think, I'm not prepared at all to say that there was any general themes, because there was so much content that was put on that wall as they were asked to look at the, their statements of consultation from three different lenses on four different building designs. I wouldn't say there's anything without having all that in front of me that I could glean a theme with, which was really, really good to see, such a diverse of opinions and perspectives, I'd really like that. Mayor Tappy was able to stand up during, or after Dr. Thompson, provided the community survey results and gave a little bit of insight towards the topic that Matt and Sean were just talking about, which was interesting. And then the group got to go back again and provide some more discussion points on the community survey results, as well as some of the voter information that they were providing from last March as reference. And again, come back to the magic clingy wall and put those statements up there. Again, same position I would take, is that there were so many messages that I wouldn't be comfortable putting out a theme at this point. However, I have no doubt that our friend Crystal is going to get all that information once it's available to us, put on our education forward website, so that everything is totally transparent, and we'll get a chance to see all the great work.
And just to piggyback off what you have said, Rod Serkis, if I'm wrong, we'll be sending those statements that they did at the meeting again, for them to look at them. And that's what we did last meeting, and make any comments about those that Dennis had written up after the meeting. So we'll be getting their feedback one more time electronically before that's finalized. I'm here tonight to present the final community survey results. You guys have seen the preliminary results, so none of this will be a big shock and awe moment, but we will go through those again. The survey closed Friday afternoon online, but we'll still accept those paper copies through tomorrow, just to make sure we get those that may go through in the mail on Friday. We had nineteen thirty-two completed surveys, non-scientific survey. We had it on our website since, I believe, October nine? Does that sound right? Okay, and then hard copy via the newspaper. I think the newspaper went out October nine, and then we had it up. And as you guys have mentioned, we'll be doing a professional telephone survey.
One of the things I want to mention when we talk, we had some discussion in the group about, you know, are we going to get into validity or those kinds of things about a survey? What I would say that's most important is that we're, throughout this process, we're going to try and bring you all, maybe eight, ten, pretty important data points. One of those important data points is this survey, because it actually is taking place before the district has made a decision. So because it's taking place, it gives you a temperature of where the community's at before any kind of what you might call an educational campaign or even a preference. So for this survey, it's much like the public elections that just happened here last week. It's a poll, it's an opinion, it's where is the temperature at? And I shared with the group, even when we do the scientific survey, the scientific survey is in that ninety-four, ninety-five percent accuracy margin of error. And unfortunately, the last time we have had our professional survey done, and quite frankly, the community survey, they were wrong. So there, we can't just hone in on one set of data, is the point. We're going to stack up our ten, twelve pieces of data, and eventually, you all will have to weigh each piece of that. So each piece doesn't mean that we're asking you to hold each piece with the same amount of weight. It's take it for what it's worth, and we add a voice in the community come through. And that's why we're presenting it here as a, before, before you make the decision, where are people at?
It doesn't mean anything. I'm just curious, though, how many did you get via paper? How many were predominantly online?
Predominantly online, probably. I'd say a hundred, did you get a paper?
Couple hundred, hundred.
I would say a hundred.
Okay.
Did you get a paper, big card paper copy? Wolster.com. So this is question one, if each of the following options was the only choice on the referendum ballot, how would you vote? Blue is I would vote yes, and red is I would vote no. And then people were asked to say yes or no to each of the options.
If you go back, it's kind of interesting, too, one of the people at the meeting commented to me, their belief, and again, this is not scientific, so you can make any assumptions you want to. Their belief was, with the sixteen-hundred student addition, for example, that our election results tracked closely with the sixty-six percent. That if we had a sixty-three-ish percent, this was at sixty-six, that the comment that was made, that I actually thought was kind of an interesting one, is seems like the community perception might be where it was at back in March, or close to it. Again, not a right or wrong, that was just a position that they were looking, or a lens they were looking through.
And then I wrote those numbers down a little further. I know the guiding coalition people are wanting more same-style numbers, so I thought I'd provide you that, so those. That's the breakdown of the exact numbers. Question two, which is your preferred option, does all be a little bit French? It was in the student edition, it's forty-three percent, followed by the second high school. Again, it doesn't add up to a hundred percent, because we didn't limit how many people could choose. So it's a little over a hundred percent. And there's the breakdown to the exact numbers on there. And then the amenities, please rank on a scale of one to five, the one most preferred. I actually don't think that from Thursday that this has changed besides the actual numbers. The orders stayed the same, so it's been very interesting to see how that's been. And I also provided you guys a breakdown of all the amenities by the number of responses in your packet. Guys, any questions?
Crystal, I don't think it probably matters at all, but how did the responses flow in? There was nineteen hundred of these. Were they front-loaded? Were they kind of evenly spread out?
I would say front-loaded, and I sent out a reminder to parents. And that brought a lot. I wouldn't say that that probably had a good time loaded. Anything else?
Oh, we move on to the first one. We can go to the parameter for refund.
Yes, we have the parameter for refunding the general application, refunding bonds.
You have in front of you the motion to approve the parameters for refunding. I think the fourth part is, is that that refunding is actually a refunding of an advanced crossover refunding for the, we did that sun path in Riddle back in two thousand and six, and this can give us a better rate on the current refunding. So in the end, we're looking at trying to save about eight hundred thousand dollars over the next ten years with this refunding. That's, boy, the bottom line would be the eight hundred thousand according to the, according to the document. The floor, right? We wouldn't do it if it was under the floor.
Any questions? Now, do we have any bonds that actually haven't ever been refunded or refunded as?
Yes, I think so. I think the Jackson bonds.
They were available at the beginning. If not, the third team motion to approve the resolution. Any questions? Angela, any?
Second.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, thank you very much.
So we should be getting, we had our call for release today at two. We should be getting our reading back next week on Monday and hope to sell the bonds before December first. It's about our time out this quarter.
You definitely don't have to bite on it.
Does this come to my out of time? That's what my question is.
Go to six point three, which is the school board's timeline for referendum.
Thanks, Mary. Yeah, thanks. There's a couple documents that call your attention to. The first one is Michael Olhaisel's list of activities, description of activities, which starts on Wednesday, February fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Basically, what we're, what we're looking at here are, from a legal and financial standpoint, what are the things we'd have to get in place if, in fact, we wanted to go to election? And one of the options that was proposed is May fifth, so this, Michael drew it up as May fifth. Right now, this is just a, kind of a point of information. It's, you can see from, from this that in January, February, you have to take official action should you choose to go forward with the referendum. And it's all of the legal stuff, it's the design of the ballot question, it's the design of, you know, everything from review, comment, to election date. And I would, I'm just going to pause, you, many of you, I guess all of you actually have seen this before. Are there any comments or questions on this, this procedure? And then I'll take a look at the survey after that. Any questions at all on that?
It kind of follows the same timeline as the last.
It does.
Changes it by a couple months.
Right, so if I were someone watching this, the message would be that the school district would have until January, basically, for a first reading of a ballot question, February for a second reading of a ballot question, or a May fifth where people would go to the polls. Okay?
I have, do a really procedural question. Why is the designation of new polling locations required before we actually have our official vote on the twenty?
Let's act, ask our election judge.
It's election timelines and statute days. And at least the last thing we did, we sent a mailing indicating what their polling place was, we need to change it. Even if we were changing it back to normal, we'd have to notify them then. So statute days, and then we need to.
Okay, any other questions?
Right, because I have to.
I actually get eight in my head.
Sarah, do you have any of the calendars to say, when is our second January meeting? When is our first February, second February? Because these aren't the meeting dates.
January twelfth is reorg in business meeting. The twenty-sixth is a learning, learning session. And then there's a business on February ninth, which we indicated as a tentative adoption date for the resolution calling for the election. That, that February ninth is the last day, date to take action.
Okay, so February ninth is the second reading, right, action, right?
Yes, yes.
And the first reading ran in January. If we have a learning session, I suppose we could add it, business.
We could, we could, and that's just our own procedure to, to add a first reading. But we could add it, I would, I would suggest we probably would want to.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, is that just so we know what that, was I dropped that date as for that first reading?
You'd need a motion on first reading calling the election, so that would be the January twelfth. And then the learning session in between, and then the February ninth for the second reading.
We could actually do the learning session with a, with a business meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have the option to do it later, to give ourselves.
The other thing you have is the option of a three-hour meeting. If you want to have that be right before you make your, your final decision on what you want to do, it gives you a chance for the board to meet in a learning session beforehand, should you choose to want to do that.
I have to do, would you be adding more phone devices?
I think that's a decision that we would all highly advise, yes. And those are details that we have to do, we have to figure out. But that was, I'm sure the guiding coalition would be happy about that too. The only other thing, not to get too far down in the weeds, is the, you know, there's only two or three survey research companies that are considered the varsity or the team, the real outstanding groups. And the Peter Leatherman Group and Bill Morris Group is absolutely the, I mean, they're, they're highly respected. In fact, the city of Shakopee will use them for their, their survey. Mark McNeil said, and I value them, and school districts, cities, counties value them. We just had the five percent, four percent, six percent error thing, and I think it would be hard for our community to believe once, once you've had a, had a failure. So, I think that one of the, the things that we talked about from the get-go is, do we go with the odds, or do we go with a different company, and then we are battling some public perception? And so, as you can see, what I've, what I've presented to you is the national company, this, or the firm, the Center for Community Opinion, is actually a company where, where the Brad Senden is a partner, and he's a Minnesota guy, and he's had twenty-five years plus. You can see the many kinds of works that he's done, proposals he's had. The, you can go through the document here, and it looks at the survey research design, all of the things that get you down in the weeds, but you're going to need to know. And then it'll, once we get the approval to, to accept the process, then Brad and his team are ready to go, which means that we would get some template questions that other communities have been successful with and have used. We would get together and work on a survey, and remember, this is telephone, again, and then ask the kind of questions that we need to know scientifically to help us determine one more set of data. And again, that survey isn't the end-all either, we've learned that. But what they say is ninety-four, ninety-five percent accurate, but once in a while, it's not the end-all. So, we have to use that as a piece of data. And that can actually happen before December eighth. I think they would start closely there after Thanksgiving, and then they would be able to complete it because they have a large enough bank, they'd be able to complete the, the sampling and get the results so that the night of our next board meeting is at the sixteenth, Sarah? The sixteenth, and we adjusted that because Brad would come in and would personally present the findings. That way it gives you all the chance, and, and as special guests at your board meeting, we've asked the guiding coalition to have a joint meeting. So all of that firsthand data and that report and the findings will come back that evening. And so, we, we are preparing and would like to move forward. And with the acceptance of the timeline and, and the process, we'll, we would get going on that right away. So, I'd open up to any questions, comments that I have.
How, what's the process for creating a question?
So, we'll get the templates and the samples. We'll, we'll be able to work with you all to make sure that the themes and the questions actually match up to what we want. We'll vet it, we'll filter it, we'll send it back to him, back forth, back forth. Once we give them the, we're good to go, then they'll, then they'll get it to their bank of folks that do the telephone, telephone survey. So we have the final say, it's our survey.
When you say we, do you mean?
School board.
Rod, I would simply say that commend you and the administration for taking a step back and probably taking one obstacle out of our path and not going back to the same place before. We had some issues, I know that wasn't an easy decision because they are reputable, but I think it was wise in this case.
Yeah, if we could get a motion to accept and approve this, Sarah and I and my admin team will get going with the first shot at, at this. And then we'll also get started with a pretty extensive Gantt chart, which would include some of those school board things that you'd like to see in a timeline. And I know many of you appreciate that. So we'll get some benchmarks and critical timeline things going for you as well for the next time we get together.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, all of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes.
Thank you.
That will go down to eight point two, which is American Education Week, November seventeenth through the twenty-first.
Yes, and, you know, this is one of the things that, and with, with American Education Week, one of the things that we can do to help honor folks is to bring forward the, the resolution that honors and recognizes, recognizes all staff. And so, I, I'm not sure if we want to read the resolution or if we want to. The spirit of the resolution speaks to all staff in our district. Sometimes it's written in a way that just identifies teachers. And we've come to know that we celebrate anyone who has a positive experience with, with students. And so, I would offer up that if you want to, in the spirit of the resolution, if we could, if we could accept that, I would, I would appreciate it.
So someone would like to read it, or would like to make a motion to accept it?
Well, make a motion to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment?
Just once again, that this is about all, all people, volunteers, community members, anyone who makes a significant difference in, in our students' lives. And this, this is an important week, seventeen through the twenty-first. And if you get the chance, please thank a staff member on your behalf.
Who signs the resolution?
Mary would. If you all would like to, we've done that before too.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking it'd be kind of cool, but I also think it would be nice if you could kind of volunteer.
I'm like, I have a very limited voice tonight.
Oh, well, you're, you can delegate.
Reggie has a next. You can interact for us.
I don't feel like I'm prepared. It's in the.
All right.
Sure, you can hear you. Whereas, American Education Week was first observed December nineteen twenty-one as an opportunity to focus public support on our nation's schools. And whereas the strength of our nation depends upon its citizenry that values our public schools and supports our children's education. And whereas all staff in the district provide a safe, healthy, and nourishing learning environment for our children and communities. And whereas schools bring together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in common enterprise. Now therefore be resolved, the school board of the Shakopee Public Schools hereby designates, November seventeen to twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen, as American Education Week in the Shakopee Public Schools.
Thank you, Randy.
Yep, you don't have a motion yet to accept that? Okay, we did, so you just added the.
No, I'll second. Did you second?
You're third.
I'll third.
You're third?
We're good.
And you read it. Any further discussion? Let's quick look ahead. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you very much. We'll go to the other, anything?
The only thing I would bring up under others, let's take a quick look at the other upcoming meetings and important dates. November twenty-fourth, we have our board retreat. December eighth is the truth and taxation hearing. And remember that, that might just, if we had a quorum of the board, typically a truth and taxation hearing is held on a normal board meeting. But because we moved that board meeting, we're actually now doing that meeting on the sixteenth. But statements went out to the public saying that December eighth was truth and taxation date. So, we'll try and get a quorum, we will get a quorum for that night, and then Mike and I will be there to join our guests. And then December sixteenth is the joint meeting of the guiding coalition school board, I talked about that before. And then there'll likely be some other business things we have to do. So we'll have, at the end of that time, we'll do a very short business meeting to follow. We talked about January twelfth a bit, that's our reorg meeting. There will also be a business meeting follow the, the annual reorganization. We have a board learning session on the twenty-sixth. Maybe, Sarah, we'll, we'll check with the board and see if we want to add a, a business meeting, a short business meeting on there. February ninth, business meeting, and that's the resolution where we do call for a special election, should you decide to do that. And then May fifth is what I'm, with the guiding coalition, talked about May fifth, May twelfth, you know, what, what do you want to do? Right now, I'm just proposing that that might be the potential special election, but certainly other options are available.
Pretty much did my job.
Yes. I was trying to help you save your voice.
Thank you, thank you. Angela, do you want to? Just to clarify, all these meetings, including the December sixteenth joint meeting with the guiding coalition, those are all here, right?
Yes.
Scott? I'm going to give you a chance, Dr. Beazer.
I'm good.
I just wanted to update something from Southwest Metro Co-op. Our principal, who's in charge of our career tech and administrator, was Minnesota Administrator for Career Tech of the Year. And we also had Mark Stone, who is our agricultural teacher, also been, he was the state career tech educator of the year. So we believe Jack happened that one, so I just wanted to, to let you know and all the upcoming meetings and important dates that we've set, so I indicate a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?